I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and we will begin with the public statement read by Commissioner Jones.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And we will begin with our department updates. Our administrator, Ms. Cottle, good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for having me again today. We will start with kind of where we are right now. So we will remain in a yellow advisory this week. Our percent positivity in our cases per hundred thousand, they are declining, but we are still over that ninety-nine per hundred thousand threshold. So we're getting closer to that. That's the good news, but we will remain in a yellow advisory this week. Our vaccination rate is slowly increasing. We did top that sixty percent mark, but it is still a very slow rise that we're seeing. So we would encourage people, again, to consider getting their vaccination if for COVID nineteen, if they have not done that already. The Miller Drive, our public health clinic on Miller Drive, is open five days a week. They are extremely busy providing all three vaccines. They are seeing most people coming in to get their boosters. So while they are extremely busy and they are doing some of those first and second doses to fully vaccinate individuals, they are doing a lot of booster vaccine for Pfizer as well. Last week, we had several mobile units throughout the county, so we had extra testing and vaccination available. I would like to say that from all reports I've received, that they were as busy as they could possibly be, but they were not. Now that I won't say that they were not busy, I'm sure they would tell you that they were, but they were steady, but they did not see the capacity that they had the ability to see. So again, we do have a lot of opportunities in the community. You can go to ourshot.in.gov for vaccination sites. You can go to coronavirus.in.gov for testing opportunities. And I'm sure more mobile units will come as well, but we want to encourage everybody to test if you need to, but definitely consider getting your vaccine. A reminder that the Board of Health will meet on October twenty-first at 5:00 PM. And the task for that meeting will be to review current status and data to determine the status of the ongoing regulation we have regarding COVID nineteen and masks in indoor places. So as a reminder, the current regulation is set to expire either on October thirty-first at midnight, or if our cases fall below fifty per hundred thousand and we are in a blue advisory, or if it is extended. So the good news again is that we are seeing a decline. We'll can't predict how that will continue or what that will look like next week or the following week, but we will certainly be watching that and we'll try to do our best at predicting what that looks like and making guidance recommendations for the board. And lastly, I would just remind people that we are in flu season. It is here. Influenza does increase. There are a lot of people who have hospitalization and die from influenza every year, and influenza can impact our hospitals. We know that they are also impacted with COVID nineteen patients who need care as well. So we would encourage you to, again, use those same precautions that we use to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen. They also prevent the spread of influenza and other respiratory infections, and that does include getting your flu vaccination as soon as you can. And that is what I have for you today.
Great. Thank you so much. Let's see if my colleagues have any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
I'm just pleased to hear that we're still heading in the right direction, and it'd be nice if we do it more quickly.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I just want to repeat the fact that last flu season, there was basically very, very little flu because people were doing the things that keep it at bay, the masking, the social distancing, the hand washing. And so I hope as people go to get their COVID vaccines, that they'll also get that flu shot.
Yes, and they can be co-administered. So whether you're getting your first or second dose, or you're getting that booster, you can get your flu vaccine at the same time, as long as you are somewhere that provides both of them.
Excellent. Thank you again for all of the great information. Let's hope we get into blue soon and get back to something closer to normal if we can, but we really need folks to get vaccinated as soon as possible. That's really going to be the thing that that helps us as a community. That's so important. So thank you for that reminder. Appreciate it. All right. Now we turn to emergency management, Ms. Petroline. There you are. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, people of Monroe County. I am all bundled up today. I woke up and it was chilly, so I don't know if there's anyone else out there feeling that, but I'm cold. So I just have a few things today. I just want to remind everyone about the blood drives we have scheduled for October. They are set for October twenty-first from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and October twenty-second from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. They will be at the Southeast YMCA. I talked to the coordinator yesterday, and he said that we only have about thirty percent of those spots filled. So there is a blood shortage, and I'm going to plead to the residents that please go to our webpage, co.monroe.in.us, and click on one of those dates and make an appointment. We all have blood to share, so hopefully that touches you a little bit, and you'll go on our website and sign up for one of those. Secondly, another reminder, sign up for those county alerts. Again, you can find it on our webpage. Just find that megaphone right on the front page, click on it, and you can put in your information, designate which way you want to receive alerts via text, phone, or email, and you can get things such as travel advisories, weather alerts, COVID alerts, all sorts of different things, the best way to get information from us. So make sure you get on there and sign up and tell your friends. So again, this month is fire prevention month, and I'm going to talk about the smoke alarm. The National Fire Protection Association reports that two-thirds of home fire deaths, there was not a working smoke alarm found in the house. So smoke alarms are designated to to monitor smoke levels if there is a fire. So if it detects smoke, then therefore it will sound. Now, I also want to talk about carbon monoxide detector. That is actually a different thing. Carbon monoxide is a toxic, colorless, odorless gas. Now, that is a byproduct of combustion. Things that in your house where combustion happens would be when you start your car, when you have any type of gas-powered appliance in your home, and if you have a gas-powered fireplace. So if you have a garage, if you have any type of gas-powered appliance in your home, if you have a gas-powered fireplace, you need a carbon monoxide detector. So again, those are two separate things. So as for the placement of these items, a smoke alarm and a carbon monoxide detector should be on every level of your home and outside and inside of every area where you sleep. Now, as for a smoke alarm, you want to either install it on your ceiling or at least five feet from the ground on your wall, because smoke tends to rise. Now, with carbon monoxide, it's actually a heavier gas, and it's actually better to install it kind of closer to the ground. Now, as for maintenance for these things, both the smoke alarm and the carbon monoxide detector only last about ten years. So you want to go ahead and replace those if they're ten years or older. You want to make sure you replace the batteries every year and test them monthly. Now, different purchase options that you can do for that. You could actually install interconnected smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors, where if one sounds, they all sound. You can also purchase a combination alarm, where it's a smoke alarm and a carbon monoxide detector in one. And for people in your household who might be hearing impaired, there are different devices that you can use to interconnect with the smoke alarms and the carbon monoxide detectors, such as strobe alarms and the bed shaking alarms. And I've seen those actually in person. Those are pretty cool. But that is all I have for you today. I hope you learned a little bit about the smoke alarm detector. And thank you so much for having me, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Petroline. We appreciate it. Some great information there. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. I just appreciate the tips.
Commissioner Giffens? Oh, you're muted.
Yep. I was shocked to learn that in two-thirds of the home fires, there's no working smoke alarm. That's just, oh, my gosh.
That was too high for me to be comfortable with, I guess.
That's amazing, and it's always a good time to change your batteries when we do a time change, right? So that's always a reminder, which is sadly coming up soon.
We fall back, so we get a little bit of extra sleep, baby.
That's the benefit. All right.
I also wanted to say I've signed up to donate blood on October the twenty-second.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Next, we will turn to Ms. Ridge.
Morning.
Good morning for an update.
So we are getting ready, getting roads, two final roads for this paving season, Bar Road, waiting for some stump removals there, then we'll be doing in-house paving there. And Rockport or Rock East Road from Rockport just past Mount Zion, we are replacing some pipes down there with our stormwater crew, getting it ready to be paved by an outside contractor. We also have our street sweepers out right now. They are in Sunrise Estates over off State Road forty-five, and our bridge crew is working over in the Steinsville road area. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I do want to say that it is a very busy, again, at the intersection of Smith Pike, Woodyard Road, and Curry Pike. I think we've seen every bit of twenty-five, thirty utility workers out there getting utilities moved to get that done before the end of the year, but it's moving along great, so we can do a full construction in two thousand and twenty-two. So I would definitely avoid that area if at all possible. That's all I have.
Great advice. Thank you. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Ridge, and we will be seeing you again a little bit. Thank you. All right. Next, I'd like to bring on our auditor, Kathy Smith, to talk about the annexation. There you are. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Monroe County. It's interesting that Kate was talking about fire deaths from fires, because yesterday in our constituents meeting here for the annexation, I told how the Van Buren Fire Department saved a lady who lived next door to us, and we had newer houses, right? And her fire alarm did not go off, and she was upstairs, and she couldn't hear it, and her house was fully, I mean, it was terrible. So I just have a lot of respect, and I just want to say that my next-door neighbor could have been a casualty. And so I appreciate her bringing that to everyone's attention. Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about annexation. This is going to sort of be the nutshell of my meetings that I have at ten o'clock and two o'clock. And I do appreciate the county commissioner, Julie Thomas, coming yesterday to meet with constituents and see what the meeting's all about. And I also gave the same little presentation last night for the county council. So if you've heard it before, I'm sorry, but it's very important and affects a lot of people. So basically, annexation works this way. Once there's a proposal for annexation, and it's voted on by the entity that wants you annexed, you either you've either vote for it by doing nothing, or you vote against it by making a petition. And it's a little on the confusing side, and that's one reason I wanted to have meetings so people understand. So the state board accounts rules, which I'll be happy to email or give anyone, basically talks about annexation like it's one proposal for annexation. We currently have seven simultaneous annexation proposals. So that makes seven ordinances, so we're doing it really seven times. So it kind of makes, it's a little counterintuitive to the instructions the state board accounts has given that the citizens, saying you can only petition once. So how it really works is you can petition, you can petition once per group or per area that you own property in. So if you own property on the east side, and you live there, and you own property on the west side that you rent out, if they're both in annexation in different areas, you could actually remonstrate or vote down annexation with your with your votes two different times, because they're each in different areas. So there's a lot of questions on how many times can I vote, and what if I own property in a company? So if you own property in a company name, you can also, you can also vote against annexation through this petition process by using your name and the company's name, so that we can prove that, you know, that's ownership, the person who signed had the ownership of that corporation, and that would, so the corporation would actually be the one voting against a petition or against annexation through a petition process. Now, there are two kinds of petitions. There's the simple petition, and the simple petition looks exactly like the long petition, but it only has room for five signatures. And the person who's going to sign this short petition, the one first petition, just signs on line one, and then it has to be validated. You've heard some people talk, well, I keep hearing it has to be notarized and all this this information has to be done. It's a pretty complicated process, however, it's not a complicated process whatsoever. So if you can see, I have a file stamp with my name on it. I verify this person owns this property. This lady just came in, a nice couple, married fifty-nine years. They were very, very nice. So they came in, one of them, because they own one property, sign, I filed stamped it, and they are done. And they won't come back unless they decide they're going to collect signatures in their neighborhood or something like that. Now, if you'd like to collect signatures to propose annexation, it's basically the same petition with extra pages added on there for for signatures of people who also live in the area. So the rule for collecting signatures is you must own property, you do not have to live on that property, but you must own property in the area that you're petitioning against. That's the first rule. And the second rule is you only can let people sign it that that own property in that area. So we will go through and vet them to see if anybody accidentally signed the wrong petition. They lived in area one, they signed a petition in area two. We're going to work really hard to straighten those things out. I have five days from when I get these petitions back to forward this information to the city and the city to provide information to me once they once they receive my information on whether there is a waiver of remonstrance filed on those pieces of property. And if so, I'm collecting phone numbers, so I can call people back and let them know if there's issue with their petition not for me, not accounting. The other thing I want to mention is because it is a little confused, two actually confusing points. The first one is that people have already been circulating petitions, but those petitions were petitioning the city to not vote for annexation. Okay? Those petitions are no longer any good, because the city's already adopted seven different areas for ordinances to be to be annexed for annexation. One didn't get voted down, so whatever petition that person or that area had, they were successful. But once it goes through the city and the city council passes it to a vote, which they have, these seven areas, now the petition is a different petition. It's the state remonstrance petition, and you are actually petitioning it to the state, to the state. And how it's going to decide whether the the annexation gets voted up or gets voted down. If it's fifty percent or less, do not petition, okay? Do not petition against it. It will automatically become annexed. If sixty-five percent or greater, it automatically fails the annexation litmus test, so they don't have enough votes to carry it. If it's between those two numbers, then there's a pretty complicated process in the court system to see what what will happen. So people always ask me, these are really complicated, it's kind of compicts itself. So how do I know I'm doing the right thing? So I made a simplified set of notes for annexation, or what I like to call a cheat sheet or annexation for dummies, so that you could just read through here, because it clarifies when can a person remonstrate twice, right? When can they file two petitions, two petitions or three petitions? So it clearly, it clearly delineates that that instruction. But one thing I want to talk about is why would a person petition against annexation? And the example that I used yesterday was like fire departments. Fire departments are affected, different people are affected depending on where you live. But for instance, where I live, I built the house twenty-seven years ago. You know, I have the sheriff's department, I have the county stormwater, I have Van Buren Fire, and I was telling how wonderful Van Buren Fire was to our neighborhood. And so, and I live on the other side of thirty-seven. I think it would be harder to get the city's police cars and stuff out there. So as a homeowner, I would prefer county services, so that's really, really what I'm most interested in. So taxes are like a bathtub. There's a levy, a maximum levy that you can pick. And once that bathtub's full of water, no more water fits in it. But you can divide that water into lots of different vessels, and that's really what this is about, is the division of that water or tax money and who and who gets it. So I guess the question would be, is does a person who lives in the annexation proposal area, would they prefer county services or would they prefer city services? Now, yes, taxes will probably be higher because city tax rates are higher, but I want people to understand exactly what annexation, if you're really voting for where do you want your tax money to go? Where do you want your tax money to go? And if you're confused, I'm available. My cell phone number is eight one two three six zero twenty-three thirty-eight. You can call me anytime. I'll be happy to take your phone call personally, or my chief deputy, Chris Munch, will help you. His phone number is eight one two three four nine two five oh nine, and that's his desk phone. Either of us will be able to help. After hours, please call me. During the day, you can call him. You can call us both during the day. But, you know, we we work on salary that tax money has provided. So we work for all the people, whether they're for annexation or against annexation. We're going to be downstairs in the courthouse on the first floor for the next ninety days until this annexation period of remonstrance or petition against annexation period ends. So it is, it is, it is my pleasure to help all the citizens decide what they want to do and help them and help them, you know, help them decide and build the paperwork out. So please, please make sure that that you give me a call. Let me help you if you're confused, or come in and visit me one-on-one. I'll sit right down with you, and we will make sure that you have all your paperwork. You don't have to go out to get a notary. We have notaries here, doesn't cost anything. I don't want anybody to think there's any expense associated with this. It's really not. It's kind of like going voting for an elected official, right? Who do you want? This one or that one? That's sort of what you're doing. You're voting whether you want annexation or you don't want annexation. So a positive vote for annexation is to do nothing. A negative vote against annexation is to come in and draw a petition out. Even if you sign a petition, so I'm going around your neighborhood, collecting signatures to the city, saying, please don't pass these ordinances. They're already passed now, and the only way now to continue to try to defeat annexation is to fill out a state petition, which I have free, like I said, downstairs in the courthouse. Now, the city's doing it too. The city's doing it in their lobby. We, you know, but you're welcome. A lot of people say, why don't I put my property number? I'm not exactly sure which area I'm in. You know, we're staffed here to help you, to help you make that decision. So it really really boils down to, do you prefer city? Do you prefer city services? Or do you prefer county services? And and so once you've kind of made your decision that, yes, I think I do want to petition against annexation, you come in, we'll help you or give us a call, and we'll get you stuck to email and work it out for you. And that's kind of the end of my presentation, unless the Commissioners have specific questions for them.
Thank you so much, Auditor Smith. We appreciate it. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, that was extremely helpful. Thank you very much for doing it. I did want to ask, I mean, I assume that if you own two parcels in the same annexation area, you do get to vote or remonstrate twice?
No, not if the exact same ownership is one person. However, if two people own those co-properties, one can do it for one and one can do it for another.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I'm sorry for that, what you heard in the background. There was an elderly gentleman here, and he couldn't hear very well, and we were helping him remonstrate. And so the 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 plexiglass beside me that you guys can't see, I guess I'll turn it, has all the maps, and he was standing there asking questions, and nobody wants to be impolite, so that she was trying to help him. So sorry about that.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, it sounds like people need to do this as early as possible in case there is a glitch, so that things can be corrected. And but I really want to thank you and Chris for being down there twice a day, or ninety days. That's a lot.
Well, it's quite a thing for the presentation, but we're down here from eight to four. Someone is going to be downstairs eight to four that whole time.
Yeah.
Amazing. Amazing.
Yeah. So folks, folks who want to come in can drop by the courthouse eight to four, Monday through Friday, go to the north door. It's easiest. There's no steps to get in. And the folks from the auditor's office will be sitting right inside the doorway. And yeah, we do appreciate that you've you've developed this information program. I sat through it yesterday. It was helpful. You answered a lot. We had a lot of questions for you, so you've answered. You answered a lot of questions.
That's sort of important to point out, is in the past, we haven't had good handicap ramps and handicapped parking places. So a lot of the elderly people are people that have a challenge for getting in and out of the car and into the building, has said, boy, I used to couldn't get this building, you know, now this makes so much difference. So I want people to know, if you're out there and you hesitate coming here, because, you know, it's an older building, there used to be challenges, it has all been fixed. There are several handicap spots out front. There's a nice flat ramp that you can get up. We have door, door buttons you can push, and we're looking right outdoors, we can help you. So don't let that keep you from coming in, because we we've fixed all that stuff. So thank you.
Yeah. And I will also note that the documents that Auditor Smith was referring to are available on our website, co.monroe.in.us, under the Important News Red Banner. Just click on that, and you'll see both the State Board of Accounts version and the plainly written explanation of what those instructions mean as well. So you'll see both of those documents there. And also, I know if folks are have an interest in trying to organize neighborhoods or have questions, there's a group of residents, county residents against annexation. If you wish to reach them regarding organizational events, their number is eight one two three six one four four two four, and there are going to be some mass signing events coming up at the fairgrounds, October eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-second, five thirty to seven thirty in the community building at the fairgrounds, also very easily accessible. So you could drop in at any of those events as well, if that's easier to do than to go to the county courthouse between eight and four, you can go to the evening event. So again, thank you so much for all of your help and all of your Um, so again, thank you so much for all of your help and all of your assistance and all of the information. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Eric Evans, Technical Services Department. Um, and you're going to provide us with a, um, range of information to keep us all safe, uh, online.
That's right. October is Cyber Security Awareness Month. This is the second meeting of the month, so I've got some valuable cybersecurity awareness for you. Uh, as previously, uh, I'll be coming at you at every meeting this month to give you a little three-minute segment. Uh, I'll also be doing an hour-long lunch and learn towards the end of the month to encourage participation. We're giving away a valuable trophy that got a lot. I had a lot of emails this week about the trophy we're giving out. People are very excited about the possibility of winning a valuable award for their cybersecurity knowledge. So that's kind of what we're trying to do to drive these points home. Uh, so without any further ado, Michelle, if you could give me three minutes on the shot clock. Uh, today we are talking about whaling. Uh, this is a social engineering technique called whaling that focuses on the whale of the organization. So in a private sector corporation, it'd be a president or vice president. Here at the county, it would be a social engineering exploit focused on one of the leaders of the group. Uh, and it can work a couple of different ways. Sometimes the, uh, person who's trying to do the exploit will focus on the whale, uh, and, and will send a directed email to one of the elected officials. In our setting, it would go something like this. Hey, I, I have an invoice that has not been paid. Could you arrange for a wire transfer? Uh, in this particular setting, wire transfer should be the trigger, red flag. Uh, if you, as an elected official or a leader in your organization, get an email saying that so, so-and-so needs an elected or needs a wire transfer, your next step should be to verify that through some manner other than the email. Uh, and, you know, we saw something similar, uh, a couple of years ago where they contacted our HR, uh, person and tried to get them to redirect a direct deposit. Uh, the whaling technique can work the opposite direction too, where, uh, the social engineering person tries to impersonate the per, the person in leadership. So like if you are working in an office and you get an email that purports to be from your boss, uh, and, and from that standpoint, the exploit works in such a way where the email says something like, hey, I forgot to get my significant other a gift for our anniversary. Could you go out and get a gift card? Uh, and, and we've seen this happen a number of times. Now, in our organization, uh, the whole, uh, you know, whaling exploit from that direction doesn't work as well because obviously, you know, we've got people that work in some offices that never come in contact with, like for instance, the county council. So some random person in the public defender's office getting an email from a county council person asking them to go out and get a gift card doesn't happen so much. But again, in this situation, the red flag that should trigger awareness that it's some sort of scam is, uh, you're asked to go out and get a gift card of, for someone's anniversary. Uh, obviously you should stop it from happening that way on two different levels. Number one, it's probably a scam where you're going to be made to read the numbers on that gift card, which then transfers the ownership of that. Number two, you have a responsibility to not allow your friends to buy gift cards for anniversary gifts. You just don't do that in polite society. Anyway, that is my three-minute presentation on the exploit of the week, whaling, uh, or whale fishing, as it were. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much, Erica. We've learned that anniversary gifts should not be a gift card. Um, no, but we've learned a lot from you. Thank you. Uh, comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I actually experienced this a few weeks ago and finding it to be rather strange and not being totally certain. I did call TSD and ask them about it and they told me, no, you're just being scammed.
And we see it a lot daily.
Yeah. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I've gotten several of these requests, um, come through. So I think it's really important that we share this kind of information with the general public. So thank you.
All right.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Evans. We appreciate you. All right, uh, next, um, on our, let's see if there's any other department's updates. I don't know if, um, Ms. Nestor Jelin has an update for us or if she's just on for the later packets. Just raise your hand if you have a department update. Okay, and with that, we will, uh, turn to our, um, uh, public comment, uh, period. Um, and this is for, uh, the public to comment on items that are not on our agenda. Uh, you are limited to a total of, um, three minutes. And at two minutes and 30 seconds, you will hear a tone.
There will be a tone here soon. My computer is currently rebooting.
Oh. Well, we'll just say you will hear a tone. That's okay. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Dayton. And, uh, when you hear that tone, you have, um, 30 seconds left to complete your thoughts. And at three minutes, you'll hear another tone, uh, before you are, um, cut off. And, uh, we ask that you, uh, provide your name and whether or not you are a Monroe County resident. So, uh, with that, uh, it looks like we have, um, first up, Guy Loftman. Good morning. Can you verify your name and that you're a Monroe County resident?
Yes, my name is Guy Loftman. I live at 4835 South Victor Pike in Monroe County.
Right, thank you, sir. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, uh, a few things all related. First, I just want to thank you. It's not on today's agenda, but for the, for, for not allowing 4691, my next-door neighbor, uh, South Victor Pike to, to go medium, uh, density residential. It, it's just, it's not just that it's in my backyard. It's the, it's the nature and it's the drainage and it's the urban sprawl. Uh, I really, uh, you, you all made a, I really appreciate that decision. Um, second, I, uh, got in much more direct contact than I usually do. And certainly since I retired from practicing law six years ago with, with, uh, your, the, the county staff. And they were universally so helpful and, and, uh, patient, uh, with, with me, uh, planning particularly Rebecca Payne and Jackie Nester and Stormwater, uh, Kelsey Tonia, um, Highway Paul Saturday and Lisa Ridge. Uh, the plan commission itself was so, uh, so patient and, and understanding. Uh, and I thought President Margaret Clemens did a great job of, of, uh, of, of herding cats to, to keep those meetings going. Uh, it's, it's so easy to assume that everything is in good hands, uh, with, with our elected officials. And generally speaking, I think it's true, but I really saw it in action. Uh, and especially the commissioners yourselves. Uh, you know, looking at contracts for road surfacing and, and the development thing that affected me and the COVID and the emergency management. It's, it's, I've, I've been getting much more up close and personal, well, you know, by Zoom than I, than I, than I usually do. And, uh, I want to thank you and, and say for, in, in my opinion, our county is in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we appreciate that. Uh, next we have, uh, Sriti Rana. Professor Rana? Can you, uh, verify your name and you're a Monroe County resident?
Thank you. I'm Sriti Rana and Monroe County resident. And it sounds like you can hear me? Great.
We can.
Thank you. Well, good morning. Um, again, I'm also not only a Monroe County resident, but also a member of the Monroe County Election Board. Um, but speaking on behalf of myself during this public comment section, the reason I'm commenting is because the term misinformation has come up, um, both when the commissioners were presenting last week at our election board meeting as well as in various discussions around the city. So I wanted to take this opportunity to urge everyone today to use that term carefully and narrowly. Um, when we're speaking about misinformation in the context of elections, that is a term of art. So I have the dictionary.com definition, um, in part because they labeled misinformation the word of the year in 2018, I think for obvious reasons. Um, but they note that it is false information that is spread regardless of whether there is intent to mislead, which we contrast with disinformation where we know there is an intent to mislead or discredit. Um, we've seen all over the country, obviously, unfortunately, attempts to spread both misinformation and disinformation regarding elections in ways that actually pose a serious threat to our democracy. Um, so what I see going on here in Bloomington, I think, is not misinformation that people are trying to spread information that is not correct. But it's really that I think people are attempting to have a public dialogue about important and complex issues, which is quite healthy for democracy. So I think people here are confused about details and seeking clarifications. And that includes all of us, the commissioners, election board members. Um, so just two examples. The commissioners have publicly stated that even if Election Central is expanded, it will only have one egress and ingress. Actually, um, that's the case currently, but under Clerk Brown's expansion plans, if implemented, would lead to several ingress and egress points. Um, additionally, I've personally had discussions with the commissioners at these meetings where the NAPA location was discussed as a satellite voting location or possibility, not just a storage location. But I've seen people, um, you know, commissioners and others telling people that they're spreading misinformation about, for example, these two points, when people are actually correctly reporting on what they've heard at meetings and what has been reported in the press. So again, I think this is part of a healthy dialogue where people seek out information, but also share their perspectives and opinions on how they think proposals will affect them and their community. So I urge everyone, the commissioners, election board members, members of the public and our communities to encourage and facilitate such dialogue. Um, it's an unfortunate reality of our time that we probably will face active misinformation and disinformation leading up to the election. And we must be ready to combat that when it happens. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right, let's see if there's anyone else who wishes to offer comment on an item that is not on our agenda. All right, seeing none, we'll come back to our agenda. Um, and our next item, um, item five, please.
Move approval of the minutes for October 6th, 2021.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Any comments, edits, corrections?
No, I don't.
All right, um, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of minutes, October 6th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
All right, thank you. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, October 13th, 2021. And that's all. Second. We have a motion and a second, and we have Mr. Miller joining us again. Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, unfortunately, just, uh, counts payable today. No payroll on Friday this week. Um, the total for claims, however, was $2,064,149.04. Um, $1,378,562.50 was for Monroe County Treasurer for quarterly full-time self-insurance. Uh, $128,395.78 was for M. Dode LLC, First Merchants, uh, which was primarily for tax sales surplus. And finally, um, $84,544.03 was for advanced correctional, uh, which was for November onsite medical and mental health services per the contract, as well as, uh, some August and September overage costs.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, I had had one question that I, um, asked about earlier, so thank you.
All right. Excellent. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand, um, in the Zoom screen. Seeing none, uh, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of claims docket, accounts payable, October 13th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Uh, yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, you as well. Uh, now we'll move on to new business. Our first item, please.
Move to approve a CARES claim submission, fund name, county general, fund number 1,000, in the amount of $4,264.20.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. And we have Ms. Gregory here from the auditor's office. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Um, I'm here today to request permission to submit a claim for payment. Um, this is from our, um, County CARES, um, Community Assistance Program that, um, concluded, um, earlier this year. So this just was a claim for the Monroe County Humane Association that, um, application was received, all accompanying documentation was received. Unfortunately, um, it simply did not get paid. So I'm requesting permission to, um, pay that.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Um, it'll be nice to get this taken care of. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
I'm just glad that we are taking care of this and it did get caught.
Yes, there's been a complete reconciliation. Um, I went over everything again. Everything is in perfect order. You won't be hearing from me on this topic anyway, again.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, how much, how much money did we, were we able to share with the community, uh, through the CARES money?
Oh goodness, I don't have that in front of me, but if memory serves, I, I want to say it was about one and a half million. Please don't quote me on that, but somewhere in that ballpark.
Wow, that's amazing.
It really is.
Yeah, so, so proud of Monroe County and, um, so glad the council, uh, worked with us and, and the auditor's office. And as a team, we have, uh, provided a lot of grant funding to a number of, um, businesses and organizations, not-for-profits who suffered losses during, um, the COVID pandemic. And it's been, um, really, uh, um, really great part of our job in a really horrible time. So we, we certainly appreciate all the hard work that it took to organize all of this. Um, let's go ahead and see if there are any comments from the public. Just raise your hand. Okay, I do not see any. So with that, uh, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the CARES claim submission?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you, commissioners.
Next item, please.
Move to approve National CineMedia LLC Winter Outreach Campaign. Fund name, Safe Place Outreach. Fund number 9103-30058. In the amount of $3,839.89.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. And we have Ms. Nesby standing by from the Youth Services Bureau. Good morning.
Oh, my God, my name is Ms. Merchant. Am I, oh, I thought I was muted for a second. There's always that panic, right? Um, but I am the Shelter Outreach and Safe Place Coordinator for Youth Services Bureau here in Monroe County. Um, National CineMedia is a company that we've worked with for several years. Um, and this contract is part of our grant-funded outreach strategy. We provide in theater, they provide in theater advertising for us to educate and promote awareness about our Safe Place program, which provides services to youth in crisis. which provides services to youth in crisis. And we just want to educate youth and families about the program and make sure they know it's available to them. So the Safe Place, the Safe Place ad will run before every PG-rated movie and higher, as well as in a lot, in the lobby circulating every 12 minutes. With this particular contract this year, we're also refreshing our ad and getting a free creative with that and then a discount on our digital services as well. So the campaign itself is runs from November 1, 2021 through January 2, 2022. We kind of highlight this time because there's not nearly as much going on this time of year to reach out, to do outreach and do events. So this is kind of our balance for that, making sure people are getting that information. Total projected impressions with both the theater and advertising, as well as the digital component, we're looking at about 112,000 impressions, a little over that as well. So it's a pretty effective way to reach people. NCM, which is National CineMedia, has done some studies, so they've got data out there. Who's going to the movie theaters? Are people still going? And yes, they are. It's looking like about 80% of the people they've surveyed are comfortable going to theaters. They want to get out of the house. And some of those big blockbuster movies that were supposed to come out in 2020 are now slated for this year. So you've got a lot of big movies that are drawing people in. And so we're really excited to make sure we cover this kind of activity that families may be at. And Commissioner Giffens was kind enough to ask some questions and always refresh my memory about how this works. Because the digital component is not my strength in terms of how it works, but I always like to make sure I understand. So what happens with that is they stream ads for us via different advertising platforms like Hulu, Amazon Prime. And there's a whole big list that are kind of channel-focused. And they do that by targeting moviegoers who've been in their theaters. So if you're familiar, your phone has an IP address. And when you walk into a theater, it actually picks that up and then can promote the ads through the services that you use. So that's how we target people here in Monroe County. And they do that with their, we will have a list of the codes that they target as well. So we make sure we cover people who can access our particular program as well. And so I'm ready for any questions, if you have any as well.
Thanks. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
This is just a wonderful program, and I'm glad that you're able to advertise it so successfully. Often, it's, we have wonderful programs, but it's very difficult to get people knowing about them. So this is a very good way to go about it. And I know we've done this for a few years, because I know I've seen this several times before.
That's so great to hear. And what I like is now that we're adding that digital component, we can actually measure the successful, how successful a campaign is, because we can actually monitor how long any of our ads are previewed or watched. So you can see the different ways, and we can actually count that in some of our outreach numbers, which then in turn helps us when we're reporting for our grant funding as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, as Ms. Nazby and I were emailing back and forth, she actually, how many, how many blockbuster films are supposed to come out between now and the end of the year? It was amazing.
It's, it's like eight or 10 or something. And they've already got how some of the biggest movies over the summer, they're reporting on, you know, seeing, you know, record numbers of people attending these. So there's a lot of hope for the eight or nine big slated to come out. And that doesn't even count the ones that are a little bit smaller. And we've got a lot of family and children-oriented movies coming out during our campaign. So we're really hoping for a lot of engagement to be able to see our, our ad.
Excellent. Thank you for working on this. Important avenue of communication. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Just raise your hand in the Zoom screen. And I do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the National CineMedia LLC Winter Outreach Campaign?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we'll go on to the next item, please.
Move to approve ordinance 2021-44 Animal Shelter Interlocal. Fund name, county general, fund number 1,000-35040-0626, in the amount of $342,912.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell, please tell us all about it.
Yes, this is our, our annual interlocal with the city of Bloomington and the town of Ellisville for animal shelter use. It includes a couple of different things. The first is the, the cost of it is associated with the actual animals brought in from county jurisdictions outside of the city of Bloomington limits. But within the county parameters, that number is then in between the town of Ellisville and Monroe County. So we're essentially paying a per-animal cost. And that cost is based upon the animal sheltering side of the cities, city animal control center. And so it doesn't include their animal control cost. It's just the sheltering costs that are associated with that. So that's, that's, that's what the number is based on. The county has always handled animal complaints and things within the city of Ellis, or town of Ellisville. And this gives them the mechanism to do that. We have a quite an ordinance that requires certain activities. Typically, what we look at are dogs running loose and vaccinations and those kind of things. So we do maintain our ordinances in the town of Ellisville. And this is the mechanism we use to be allowed to do that. And and that's, I was just gonna, and, and we've had a lot of history with this, and it seems to be very successful in being able to house animals that really need to be housed somewhere.
Yeah. Great. Thank you for working on this. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm just very pleased that we're able to do this, that the city allows us to, or we have an agreement with the city to be able to bring animals to them. It's especially important, the animals that are running loose. It used to be that you could never go down almost any road in the county without seeing a dead dog somewhere along it. And that very seldom happens now, since people no longer are just letting their animals run loose.
That's a good point. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, when I, when I saw the per-animal cost, I was surprised. And I guess it kind of reminds us that, that people shouldn't abandon their animals, that we all pay for it when you do.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah. Excellent. And let's see if there's any public comments on this item. While we're waiting, I'll give a shout out to our animal control officers that work with our sheriff's department, because they have a tough job and they do it well. I don't see any hands raised. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2021-44?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. And next item?
Move to approve Resolution 2021-54 Establishing Monroe County Precinct and District Boundary Advisory Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. And Mr. Cockrell, will you please tell us all about it?
Yes, and this is kind of a continuation of a resolution we had earlier this year, where we indicated we were going to form this commission. The U.S. Census data was in late this year, which caused a delay in the whole precinct boundary and district boundary process. So the timeline for this commission's work is, has been shortened greatly. I think essentially, they are going to look at our, and, and make a recommendation to the commissioners on what the appropriate precinct boundaries and district boundaries, boundaries should be. I would like to read a section of it that kind of talks about what they're, what they're looking at. And this is kind of the second paragraph after the now therefore be it resolved area. It says, "The precinct and district boundary advisory committee shall work to ensure that the election precinct and district boundaries comply with legal requirements, and she'll be developed to promote continuity, graphic, geographic integrity, keeping the core neighborhoods together, geographically identifiable boundaries, and geographic compactness, underlying political affiliation. Areas historic, and areas historical voting preference shall not be considered during this process." So it's going to have four members, not more than two, maybe from either political party. And they've got a lot of work and a short time to do it.
Yes, a short time, indeed. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Just thank you so much to these people who have volunteered to do this. It's, it is a big job they're taking on, but also an extremely important one. So thank you to all of you.
Commissioner Giffens?
When we, when we talk about the gerrymandering that we see coming out of different areas, I'm really pleased that we have said we, we want to see things relatively balanced.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and we do have appointments to make later in our agenda, so stay tuned for that, for folks who are wondering who these four people will be. And yeah, definitely appreciate the hard work that's going to happen and the work that Mr. Cockrell's done to get us to this point, to get our resolution together. So appreciate that. All right, let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Just raise your hand. That looks like B-square. Good morning. Name, and are you a Monroe County resident?
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Dave Askins, and yes, I am a Monroe County resident. Just had a quick question about any specific deadlines that might be applicable with respect to the precinct boundaries, as contrasted with the boundaries for commission and council districts. If there's any comment on that, it would be great to be able to include it in the write-up. If there's not, I totally understand. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Mr. Cockrell. Would you like to address that?
Well, I, I think the state is also, and we've, we've been working with the state. The state is aware of the compressed timeline. I spoke with the, one of the attorneys for the Indiana Election Commission. And there is a date of October 15. And he's like, it's not a deadline, it's an update time. So we're going to get them an update by that date. We still, we don't have a firm deadline for when they like to see these things. Although I will say that it all has to be done early January before people can file to, to be a candidate for any of those things. So I don't have any specific dates. But I, but the, the process is short. I, I would, I know that we are, we've reached out to the Indiana Election Division to kind of get a feel for when, when we, when this committee's work needs to be done in order to comply with, with their processes. And I've not heard back on, on that timeline yet.
Yeah, this is an as soon as possible moment, I believe.
Yes.
Yes, and there is, and there's clearly a lot of work that has to be done, but it has to be done right. And so there is a very fine balance there between working quickly and getting it right. So, but we think we've, we've got a good committee that we're going to put together for this. Let's see if there's any other questions or comments from the public. Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2021-54?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve to award Regal, Inc., North Shore Drive Bridge Number 193. And that's project number. Fund name, cumulative bridge, fund number 1135, in the amount of $342,578.85.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. Ridge joining us to tell us all about it.
Good morning again. So bids were advertised and opened in a public Zoom meeting on October 6, 2021, at 3:00 p.m. We received six sealed bids for the project. The lowest, most responsive and responsible bidder was Regal, Inc. We would like to award that project to them. The, and actually, the bid came in great. The engineer estimate on this project was $490,166.90. So that's a savings of over $150,000. So we were thrilled. Regal, Inc. just completed our bridge on Bridge 308 on Rogers Street, and they did a great job on that. So we look forward to working with them on this project. It'll take place. Our goal is to do it in the spring of 2022. The road will have to be closed for approximately 14 days. So we will have to work with emergency services. We've been in contact with the trustee over there. We'll be working with the school system also, since that will be a long detour route for the 14 days, but it's necessary to get the bridge replaced.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
It's always nice to hear about savings of that sort.
Absolutely.
And also, very nice to have our bridges well taken care of.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I echo what Commissioner Jones said. Thank you.
Yeah, really good work. And it, and detours are difficult in that part of the county, but they're possible. So it'll be interesting to see how that goes. That's another part of the hard work that you do. We really appreciate it, and you've answered the questions I had about when, how. So excellent work. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Regal, Inc. Bridge 193 Project?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Colleagues, do you want a short break before we go into the planning, or are we good?
Two minutes?
Okay, two minutes. Let's take two minutes recess. We'll come back at 11:13. Thank you, everyone. We'll be right back. Okay. Ready to begin? Great. I will call this meeting back to order, and we will begin with our next item, please.
Move to approve ordinance 2021-41 Joseph Green Planned Unit Development Outline Plan Amendment 2.
Is that a second?
Yes, second.
Thank you. We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Mr. Myers here from the Planning Department. Good morning.
Morning. Can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Okay, great. Sharing my screen here. Can you see that all as well?
Yes, now we can. Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, so this is ordinance 2021-41 Joseph Green PUD, or excuse me, yes, beauty outline plan amendment two revised. You have heard this petition before back in, I believe it was. Check my date here. In October, no, excuse me. I think it was in early this spring. I don't have the exact date here for me. But there has been quite a few revisions to this petition. And the petitioner has brought it back forth to you after coming through the chain of Planner View Committee and the Plan Commission. So I'm going to go over a summary for you guys. The petition site is comprised of a 4.12 acre property located in located in section 20 of Perry Township. It's located at 4831 and 4833 South Rogers Street. It's currently made up of three separate parcels. Two, three parcels are to be transferred in accordance with an administrative plat that has yet to be finally recorded. The petitioner is requesting to amend the zoning map from a state residential one, single dwelling residential 3.5, medium density residential and plan unit development to a brand new plan unit development to be called Joseph Green Amendment Two Revised. The PUD outline is proposing a mixed use development, uh, that would include paired townhome condominiums, multifamily residences and some commercial space. The petitioner states in their written statement that this project will complement the existing community as well as the soon to be developed Southern Meadows, which borders this PUD site to the east. If you remember, the Southern Meadows major subdivision was approved, um, earlier, um, this past year. Um, and includes about 90, uh, single family lots. The petitioner states the development will be built out in three phases over three years. An approval of this outline plan amendment will amend the zoning map and allow for the multifamily and mixed use commercial development. Some additional background here. The petitioner has collaboratively worked with, uh, uh, the owners of the P, the Southern Meadows major subdivision to the east in order to provide an access easement, uh, and connection to West that road across South Rogers Street. Um, and this PUD petition, uh, as listed as the Joseph Green Planned Unit Development Outline Plan Amendment Two. The original one was filed in October 2020 by the same petitioner, but was eventually denied by the Board of Commissioners by a vote of three to zero. Um, and at that time, uh, the board had considered, um, had some concerns regarding density scale, parking availability and its compatibility with the character of the area. Um, you'll see through this presentation that a, a lot of those concerns have been addressed. And, uh, we'll continue on with the presentation and, um, discuss, uh, anything that may be remaining for your concerns. There also is a approved list of uses for this, uh, PUD currently. The original Joseph Green PUD, these lists, these uses are listed here. Uh, the petitioner states that all of these uses will be removed from the new PUD as these are more industrial, uh, in nature. And the new PUD will be more neighborhood oriented, providing services, um, to, uh, community members, that are more, um, neighborhood friendly, if you will. All right. So here's a location map, South Rogers Street here and West that road intersecting. Over here to the left, we have a, uh, diagram that shows the multiple parcels that will, that will combine to, uh, include the new PUD. The red outline is the original PUD, Joseph Green. And then the yellow parcels are transfer areas from the Southern Meadows petition, yet to be recorded and added to the petition site. And the green parcel area is land that was acquired by the petitioners by quiet title action. Here we have the current zoning map. As you'll note, the existing PUD, Joseph Green here in the dark red. We also have RS 2.5 slash Pro Six, medium density residential as well, and a small sliver of RE1 here. Site conditions map here to the right of your screen. You'll note that there is floodplain designation, uh, along the northern portion of the property. When we get into the discussion of the areas of this PUD, we'll note that the entirety of this section up here that's in floodplain will actually designate it open space. All right. So here we have the use comparison. I've included each of the areas that will be broken down within the PUD as well as some existing, uh, zoning districts for some comparison. Overall, there's been a significant reduction again in the permitted uses for this PUD. The ones that are included are bike shop, retail, bakery, retail, construction trailer, convenience store, home occupation, multifamily dwelling, open space, restaurant with no fryers, tavern and temporary seasonal activity, um, such as a single day use as a food truck or a produce stand and a maximum of one stand at any given time. So each of the areas have a, a varying, um, allowance for these particular uses. Area A, and we'll go into more detail when we get to the conceptual map of what these areas look like specifically. But area A is the designated floodplain area. It will include a trail, um, as well as some park benches. And you'll note that that's only designated as open space. Area B will have the largest structure. And that will have multifamily residences on the upper floor and some space on the main floor that can be converted back and forth to commercial or residential, depending on the market. This one has, uh, a much more permitted uses than area A. It has bike shop, construction trailer, home occupation, multifamily dwelling and temporary seasonal activity. Area C, this is the paired townhome condominiums. You'll note that these are only home occupation, multifamily dwelling here as well as construction trailer. Um, and I will note that construction trailer use, uh, in the work session, uh, prior to this meeting, we had a conversation about what construction trailer really means. And that's just a use that allows for, um, a developer to have a construction trailer onsite during the development stage. Um, it's also a, an existing use within the ordinance. So they wanted to make sure that they had that ability to do that while they were constructing, um, the buildings and doing the development on the property. Area D comprised of one building that will have retail on the main floor and a, uh, apartment on the upper floor. And this has the most, uh, diversity for permitted uses. Bike shop, bakery, retail, convenience store, home occupation, multifamily dwelling, restaurant, tavern and temporary seasonal activity. Finally, area E, this will also be designated as open space and will also serve as a buyer retention area. So, uh, therefore the only permitted use in this area is open space. I also included, uh, medium density residential from chapter 804, high density residential and limited business to kind of give you some comparisons of these, uh, areas to be incorporated in the PUD. Um, you'll note that limited business has very similar uses to area D. And then the residential uses are pretty spot on with, uh, the most residential area, which is area C. Parking. So the entire PUD has, uh, improved its number of parking spaces. It is up to 78 spaces. And that is not including the additional spaces provided by residential garages that will be a part of the paired townhome, um, section. Um, area A will have no parking as it is all open space. Area B with that, uh, large building with commercial slash residential on the main floor and then residential on the upper floor will have a total of 18 spaces. Area C will have 37 spaces plus the, uh, one to two car garages. And then area D, that other, uh, commercial slash residential building will have a total of 23 spaces. Table three here, uh, has a parking standards comparison. I included chapter 806, which breaks down, um, by, uh, permitted use, how many spaces a particular use needs on a, uh, property. And then I, uh, showed the comparison here to the proposed PUD. As you'll note, um, all of these are identical. Uh, the petitioner worked well with, uh, adopting the standards of chapter 806 this time around and making sure that they, um, fit, uh, with the standards that are already existing in chapter 806. Design standards. Again, I broke it down by areas here within PUD as well as a column for the entire PUD. Uh, and then those same three zoning districts that I think are the most, uh, relevant to this PUD development. You'll note that gross density for area B is the highest, excuse me, um, is higher than medium density residential and, um, high density residential. Area C has the highest of the, of the areas that have residential space, being that they're the paired townhome condominiums. Area D has one unit, um, as it has the commercial on the main floor and then that one unit above. So the entire PUD, um, incorporating all of its acreage is 5.9 units per acre. So that falls right in between medium density residential and high density residential. But note that the minimum lot areas are fairly similar, uh, to medium density residential. Minimum lot widths, same for that as well as maximum height. Setbacks and open space requirements. Um, so setbacks are a bit different here since it's a, a more, um, confined, uh, parcel for residential purposes. The setbacks are listed at 10 feet from South Rogers Street and 10 feet from West that road. Um, for medium density residential and high density residential, we have, see larger setbacks given that they are typically, um, um, more, uh, larger lots and also, um, serve just a single, uh, residential use. Side yards are very similar. And you can see the remaining ones down here. Um, minimum open space percentage for the entire PUD is 30%. Uh, whereas medium density residential, high density residential are 40%, but limited business is only 15%. So, uh, a little bit in between them as well. Infrastructure and access. So I took this segment right out of the, uh, packet that you received. Um, so things like roads, sidewalks, sanitary sewers, stormwater management, water supply system. Those kinds of things are described in this section. Um, the project will be served by South Rogers Street and West that road. And there will be an extension that will be created as part of the Southern Meadows major subdivision, um, that will connect South Rogers Street and West that road and go through the petition site to service South, the Southern Meadows. Sidewalks will be constructed as well along West that road as part of the, uh, Southern Meadows subdivision. And there's also going to be a multi-use path that runs along South Rogers Street, the entire length of the PUD, uh, petition site. The multi-use path, uh, will hope, it will stub along the eastern property line as part of the Southern Meadows petition, uh, will be brought across this PUD in an access easement to provide public access to the South Rogers Street corridor. Um, the multi-use path is also, um, able to be connected, uh, north, um, to some existing trails. If, um, some things can get worked out that are offsite, not related to this, but so there is some potential for really good connectivity in this area with this multi-use path going in the PUD area. Sanitary sewers, um, as part of the Southern Meadows project, uh, new sanitary sewer is being constructed along South Rogers Street. Provides sewer services to this PUD as well as the existing neighbors, um, along the west side of South Rogers Street. And stormwater management, uh, will be managed underground on the northern parcel, which is area B. There will be some stormwater detention facilities underneath there as well as an area E, uh, which is at the farthest south end of the site. Um, and that is the area that will also be, um, designated open space. There's no other uses there. Um, and the petitioner is stating that they will follow, uh, with all the Monroe County drainage ordinance requirements. And I'll jump down here to the bottom of your screen, um, for the Monroe County stormwater comments. And the MS4 coordinator has reviewed their preliminary drainage plan, um, and is expecting that they will be able to meet the, um, standards here and will perform more of a review when the petitioner gets to the, the development plan stage of this project. Water supply system and existing six inch, uh, city of Bloomington Water Main will serve this development along with a new eight inch city of Bloomington Water Main, uh, along West that road extension. There is no, uh, proposed new street lighting and public utilities are all available onsite currently. So here is a, uh, image of the preliminary drainage plan that the MS4 coordinator has reviewed. You'll note that this area over here, this is area E, the southernmost section of the property. Um, north is to the right of the screen. This is, uh, designated detention area above ground. And then over here under building one, this is actually area B. And they will also have some, uh, detention area here, which will be underground. Okay, here is a cutout of the traffic study that was formed for this property along with some other properties in the area. And basically, in summary, um, it is looking to, um, establish an always stop control at, uh, West that road and South Rogers Street based on the number of, of, of traffic, um, for the announced, the traffic, I should say. Um, and we can talk more about this, um, with the highway department. Do you have any questions about it? Um, there has been some communication about adding an additional, um, pedestrian crossing, um, signaling, uh, device or something. Southern, south of the petition site, um, or I should say on the southern section of this, of the petition site, um, where there is a, uh, potentially proposed crosswalk to the post office, which would be right across the street. Um, so we can talk about that, um, here in a little bit. Okay, here, uh, in the next few slides are some conceptual images for the petition site. This is the overall image. Um, this area over here to the right of your screen, this large area of the trail, that is area A. Area B is building one in the parking area here. And then as soon as you go south of the West that road extension, buildings two, three and four are all in area C. And then finally, building five, along with this additional parking area down here is area D. And then this little small green area space is area E. Um, as I stated earlier, the post office, uh, that's actually located right here, just right across the street. Um, so there has been some communication about, um, pedestrian safety here as well, um, throughout the iterations of this project. So now we're going to go through each of these areas in more detail, um, for a closer up view. This is area A, designated as all open space. This small building here is, is an existing Smithville, uh, communications building. Uh, it's a utility building, just so, um, we know. And then, um, trail, proposed trail here along with some benches for some neighborhood amenity as well as some educational signs for the floodplain, uh, area in this, um, section. Um, that came as a recommendation from a plan commission number, um, to provide some educational services for community members. This is area B, building number one. This building, as stated in the petitioner's outline plan amendments, will have a train station, um, train depot style look to it. It will have, um, a covered porch as well. It comes around the building. Um, this building size has been significantly reduced since the last time we saw this petition. Um, it is only 3,200 max square feet, BFP, and two stories maximum, uh, down from, I believe it was three to four stories the last time that we saw this. Um, additional parking as well as a result of, uh, reducing the footprint of this structure. So, um, eight new parking spaces over here and five new spaces over here as well. Um, the petitioner has also added in, um, uh, pollinator garden area in this conceptual, um, image. They have stated that they wanted to add more, uh, amenities to the neighborhood, um, and to this development. So we'll see a few more areas kind of like this, um, in the other areas within this PUD. Again, this building one will have, uh, on the main floor, commercial slash residential, uh, depending on market, um, fluctuations. And then the upper floor will be multifamily residential. This is area C, buildings two, three and four. These are the paired townhome condominiums. Um, there's been no change into their, uh, square footage in this iteration of the, of the project. They will exhibit a, uh, sawtooth-like, uh, look, uh, reminiscent of the showers building. Um, and that is in the petitioner's outline plan. They also included some areas here for neighborhood amenities. Um, so just, um, some common areas, um, in between the buildings, uh, to promote, um, a, a more, um, cohesive neighborhood use of the property. Again, parking all along the, uh, eastern end here of the site. And then each of these buildings will also have, uh, garages, residential garages. Okay, so here we have areas D and area E. Building five again will have, uh, residential space on the upper floor and then commercial space on the main floor. This is the site that has the most, uh, available permitted uses. Um, plenty of parking here on the, um, southern side as well as the eastern side of the, of this area. Pedestrian access easement, this actually connects to the Southern Meadows development, so providing some connectivity between developments here. Multi-use path along as well that comes across, um, and that goes all along north, south of the petition site. And then again, um, post offices right across the street here. Trying to think of anything else in this area. This is that detention area, although it's not really depicted. Um, it will just be open space and buyer retention. Oh, and, um, each of these, um, circle dots that you've seen throughout these images, those are actually, uh, proposed street tree plantings. And if you saw EV anywhere on the parking, um, lots, um, those are proposed, uh, electric vehicle, um, spots. Uh, the petitioner is very, um, excited to include in the development. Okay, um, during the work session, um, there was a question that, uh, the commissioners had asked of the petitioner to provide some, um, imagery of what the to provide some imagery of what the structures could look like. That there had been some of those images shared in the past of what maybe those structures would look like. So Area B, the train depot style look, here is one image that petitioner provided, a kind of an idea of what it could look like, reminiscent of the train depot that I believe is in downtown Bloomington. And then here, the showers building, the sawtooth look, they're planning on doing that with the paired townhome condominiums. And then finally, Area D, this is the small structure, Building Five, that will have commercial space and residential above, and it has got that gabled style design. Okay, so overall, planning staff gave a recommendation, positive recommendation to the plan commission based on findings, facts, and subject to the MS4 coordinator and highway engineer reports. And then the plan commission voted seven to one to board this, forward this petition to the board of commissioners with a positive recommendation and based on findings, conditions, highway department and stormwater reports. I'll take any questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Myers. Let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
I would rather wait until after the public comment.
Okay, great. Commissioner Giffens? You're muted.
Mr. Myers answered my question about the construction trailer, which I appreciate. Also, it was not, it's not really super clear to me. Is there going to be an HOA that is associated with the townhomes and apartments?
Sure. So in the, the outline plan document that the petitioner has created, there is a section in that document that states that if an HOA is deemed necessary, that it would be created.
Okay, I guess I don't understand how that, who will determine if it's necessary, I guess.
That's a good question. I'm not sure if I know the answer to it. But I can talk with planning staff and the petitioner about the, the details of that.
Thank you. And just a point of clarification, if you could go back to the slide where you showed Building Four. There you go. That is also a two-story building, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because that's, that number is missing, but it's all the same square footage as the other two. I just want to make sure for the public that they know that that's also a two-story building. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. All right. So let's see if we could hear from petitioner, petitioner representative on this item.
Hi, this is Tammy.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is Tammy Weichel Cassidy. I am a member owner of Blind Squirrels, the petitioner. And I first would just like to say thank you to Drew for doing such a thorough job today and in the past in our petition. I won't be going through a full presentation as previously because I know you all have heard about this project for quite some time now. But I do want to highlight that this area is really, this particular parcel is really in need of a redevelopment. And we think that shifting it away from a light industrial to something that allows housing opportunities is prime for the community right now. We're, we're located right in the middle of four schools. And these are schools and this is a location where the kind of opportunities it brings for people with kids who could actually walk to school in this area would be something that's very desirable and needed. And so we just really find that it will be a super refreshing change. I, I do want to point out that along the backside of the property, which is the Southern Meadows side, this project is bordered by the majority of their common area. And we are very pleased with that because that will give people just a nice open space feel in the rear there. So also regarding Penny's question, regarding an HOA, yes, we do feel that the HOA would be deemed necessary for coordinating of, of the maintenance of necessary items. And I just, I hope that you will all choose to approve this petition today, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's see if there are any, anyone who wishes to speak in support of this petition. You'll be limited to three minutes. At two minutes and 30 seconds, you'll hear a tone to let you know that you have 30 seconds left. Looks like we have Samantha Brummett. Good morning. Can you, can you state, state your name and whether or not you're a Monroe County resident?
My name is Samantha Brummett, and I am actually a lifetime resident here of Monroe County. And I fully support this development as a nearby resident. I'm also a Realtor of over 27 years here in Monroe County. I feel this would be a huge benefit, adding additional living options, potentially, potential needed businesses and or shops for our residents on the south side and in the Clear Creek area as it's growing and can offer nearby conveniences, excuse me, to all residents along with nearby businesses and soon to all visitors of the newly proposed public library off of Gordon Pike. The addition for more housing option is a huge need at this time. And, you know, as we are growing community, I feel it's going to be, it's a huge necessity. Not to mention being close to the schools. That's highly popular with people moving into our community or just moving to other areas here. And the fact that it's located near the trail also gives it a huge bonus. So I, I just, I've been following the updates of this property, seeing all of the changes, and just wanted to get behind it 100%. I've talked to a lot of residents and our nearby businesses. A lot of them fully support this and hope that you guys will too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See if there's anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this petition. I see none. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Okay, see none. I'll come back for last, final comments from commissioners. Commissioner Jones?
Well, first, I do have one small question to ask.
Okay.
The temporary seasonal space, is that going to be kind of first come, first served? Or will it somehow be reserved? Or how will that work? Or do you know yet?
Hi, this is Tammy. My plan for that would be on a, you would have to reserve to, to be able to be there. That way we could function with the one at a time approach. That way you're not overlapping and just, you know, I think it should be coordinated on a reservation basis.
Very good. Yeah, thank you. I would like to comment. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you. I know you've been through a very arduous procedure to reach this state. And you've been very patient and, and I hear very good to work with. And I'd have to say that this time around, there is quite a bit that I like about this proposal. The clearing of invasive species, species, all of the sustainable sustainability features. I, the parking does sound like it'll be very workable. I, I like the idea of the education science. I think that's really a good idea. Also, the pollinator garden. I hope that many other people around our community will take this up. It's something that's becoming extremely necessary. People don't realize that we need insects to survive and their populations are crashing. I love the sawtooth. I would love to see that become more used around the community. And in, well, the electric vehicle stations in general, I just see this as being really very positive. I just realized I did have one other question. Where for, where will the underground drainage drain to?
Okay, Kendall Kanoki should be online and be able to answer that for us with Smith's Designing.
Morning Commissioners, Kendall Kanoki, Smith Design Group. So everything on this site ultimately drains into Clear Creek. However, the underground detention for Building One will actually drain to the north into Clear Creek. You can kind of see on the screen that Drew's got up. Everything on this side of that road drains actually north and then kind of back south through the creek. Whereas the detention area on the south side of the site, which is kind of near Building Five, that will drain kind of west into the creek. So ultimately, everything's getting to Clear Creek just different ways.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have for right now.
Great. Thank you so much. Commissioner Giffens? Comments, questions?
I just also want to thank Tammy for the changes that, that she's made here. It, it seems much more in keeping with the, that general area. And I just appreciate the fact that she's worked so closely with us all.
Yeah. And I will add my kudos to the petitioner. This is really turned into a great development idea. You've been tenacious and flexible, and this is really a well-thought-out project that provides both some commercial opportunity on a small scale, but it's perfect for that area, and some great options for residents as well. You've got some great connectivity. The drainage stormwater issue's been resolved, which is wonderful. The architectural diversity is greatly appreciated. And the fact that the density is more in keeping with what's there already. And, and this is really going to be a huge improvement to a space that consists right now of sort of dilapidated warehouses. But everything is so much more appropriate and it will be a really great example to set for this area. And it's going to be, become a hub for this part of our community that's often not seen that way. So I think this is just a great project, and I just want to commend everyone on working on this and doing the right thing for Monroe County. So appreciate you so much. Did my colleagues have any other comments?
Not right now. Nope.
Okay. All right. So with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Cockrell if he'd please call the role on ordinance 2021-41.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Myers as well. All right. And with that, we have a few appointments today. Let's see who would like to make a motion on that. Two different motions, I would assume.
Okay. I'll move that we appoint to the redistricting commission, Regina Moore, Joyce Polling, Ed Robertson, and Hal Taylor. And thank you very much to all of you for being willing to help us out with this.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion, and we do have a second. And indeed, this is such an important, such an important project. It's, it's something that we know will require a great deal of time and attention to detail. And that is going to be an important part of the future of Monroe County. And creating these, these balanced, these balanced precincts and districts will be very important. Just, just want to make sure that the name is correct. It's Hal Turner. So we're, we're good on that.
I'm sorry.
But that's okay. I just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
I'm sorry. I didn't have it written down in front of me, and I should have known that.
I wasn't sure. That's okay. All right. And so with that, with great thanks, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the appointments to the?
Commissioner Thomas? Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent. We have another really important appointment to make. I will go ahead and make a motion that we appoint Ms. Kate Petroline, our acting director of emergency management, to become our director of emergency management.
I'll second that. I can't believe that I. Congratulations, Kate. And I'm sorry that I just drew a blank there.
It is completely fine. It's been a long meeting.
And it's only Wednesday.
As you said, it's cold today. It's sluggish.
Yes, we're very excited to make this appointment, although we do have to vote on it. So, but thank you for your hard work as assistant director, acting director, and hopefully as director. But let's see, drumroll please how this goes. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you all very much. I look forward to working with you going forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's great. Excellent. So we have a few announcements. Just a reminder that there is a sort of remonstration community event to remonstrate against annexation for any of the areas. The signing event will take place at the Fairgrounds Community Buildings on October 18th, 19th, 20th, and 22nd between 5:30 and 7:30, and that's at the fairgrounds. Also, the Township Assistance Fund is still active and ongoing. So if you are a Monroe County resident and you've been struggling because of COVID with basic necessities, things like rent and utilities, please contact your township trustee. Every county resident, whether they live in the city or not, has a township trustee. And while the governor's order remains in place, at least through the end of this month, this Township Assistance Fund is available. And again, with great thanks to the council and to all of our township trustees. If you're not sure who your trustee is, go to call, you can call 211 or go to 211in.org. And again, there's information on remonstrance, remonstrance process for annexation available at co.mone road.in.us under important news. And also, there is the return of the book fair for Hoosier Hills Food Bank. It's October 14th to 19th at various times, but the location is at the fairgrounds. So you can go to hhfoodbank.org for more information. And all of those proceeds go to the food bank, a very worthy cause that we all support. And I know that a few of us, if not all of us, will be volunteering at this event as well. So looking forward. So looking forward to the crowds and getting some great bargains in the process. They're, they're going to be very careful about ensuring that this is a safe event COVID-wise. So we're very excited about this event. Anything else?
I'd just remind people that tomorrow's Veterans Day at the Hoosier Hills Food Bank, and I believe that means that veterans can get in without charge, which is really, a really nice way to acknowledge their service. I would like to make one comment about Professor Rana's statement earlier. Misinformation and disinformation, I think at times that people do change their positions, that situations change. And so it's really important to stay current on what the most recent kinds of statements and positions are as we, as we try to sort through things. So, but I do thank her for her attendance today and her participation with different things.
Anything else, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
And I'll just remind everyone again, since it is October, that is a good time to think about whether or not you'd like to apply to serve on a board or commission for Monroe County. We could use your time, talent, expertise, and your contributions to making our county even more fabulous than it already is. So if you're interested in signing up for any of the boards or commissions, please go ahead and go to co.moneroe.in.us. You can just type in board commission applications, and you will, it will come up. You can also look at minutes and organizational information about each board and commission on the county's website. Just run a search there. And so with that, we're going to be adjourned. Our work session will begin at, is 12:10, okay, for everybody? Okay, our work session will begin at 12:10. We've kind of changed the schedule, the agenda a little bit for the work session. We'll start with the Health Department, then go to Legal, and then Mr. Evans. And then we'll go to Planning, then the Affordable Housing Commission, and then the County Clerk will be the, the final agenda item. So that will be our list, and we will see you all at 12:10. And with that, we are adjourned, please get vaccinated.